Okay, good morning. We'll call the meeting to order for the Brookings County Commission for Tuesday, June 6, 2023. Please rise for the pledge. Next on the agenda is number three, an invitation for a citizen to schedule the time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. There's a five-minute time limit per person. Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during this agenda item. Any requested action item may be scheduled for future meetings. And we have one person signed up today, Jeanette Gibbons.
Good morning. Where to begin and site end? To say the least, I was disappointed to find that our commissioners voted to extend a contract with ESNS with our voting machines and the control of our ballots. Because it is not only the machines, it is the control of our elections. We're turning that over to a company, the black box machines that have flash drives that help set up the elections, and yet we don't have the auditing control on the other end of it. Now, if we had the auditing control and this was an open book, I would be more content. But I don't know how we can turn our elections over and in light of all the information that keeps spilling out, three years after the 2020 fiasco, and I don't know if anyone can bury their head in the sand and say they don't know that things weren't quite right and that there have not been places that have taken action to make corrections. Counties that have ditched the machines, it doesn't take long to do some research on ESNS to see that they are not quite at the top of their game on being honest with their customers. So I'm disappointed by that. I also look at all of you and think about how we're connected and how you are in a difficult position. I cannot imagine the type of pressure that is put upon you because I see decisions being made about our elections and about other things that really don't make sense to me. So if things don't make sense, that leads me to ask more questions. Who's leaning on you or who are you looking to for direction? I read a quick message this morning of someone that had a message from a legislator in their district and saying, you know, we're kind of waiting for direction from the Secretary of State on this issue. Well, no, let's not wait for direction from the Secretary of State. We have control of our elections in our own county. We could do a lot to fix things right here and right now. And I've been pretty persistent about asking for discussion. I haven't asked you to take any drastic measures or to vote or change anything. I've asked for discussion and I have not had any of you reach out to me and say, let's sit down and talk, Jeanette, or let's, better yet, let's sit down and have a public forum and let's all talk or as many people that want to talk. Let's ask questions. Let me see what you have for evidence. Oh, my gosh, I haven't seen that before. I mean, I have information come across my desk every day from people that have found something that I haven't found before. So let's talk. And I guess my request right now, since I have not been successful in having an agenda item added to discuss here publicly, my request to you today is to schedule time to sit down and talk, and I would be happy to meet with any of you one-on-one over a, probably a cold latte on these days, an iced latte. I would meet with all of you as a group. I would invite my friends to come along. But why aren't we talking about things like going back to precincts instead of our voting centers? Why aren't we talking about small precincts so that we do have the ability to count the votes in one day and have the results reported by maybe 10 o'clock that night instead of two weeks later, two months later? How long does it take to count ballots? If we have small enough precincts, we can count them with a small group of people and your meeting with your friends and neighbors. I remember voting being quite a friendly experience. You went there and it was your friends and neighbors at the tables. It was your friends and neighbors that were voting with you. We didn't necessarily discuss how we voted, but it was a chance to be a community as well with people that are in your neighborhoods. Smaller precincts, hand counts, getting rid of our machines would do a lot to clean up our elections. And I've shared information before about Seth Keschel. I will say I was also disappointed that nobody had a chance to come down to Sioux Falls last month and hear Robert Boer, a citizen in Nebraska, and also David Clements, who's from New Mexico, people that have spent countless hours, who have given up their careers, who have taken the arrows, who've taken the nasty comments and the smear campaigns in the media to stand up for what's right. So I invite you to visit with me. You can reach out. I'm sure you can have, find some contact for me, contact information for me. You for sure have my email address. So I look forward to making progress here, right here in our own county. We don't have to wait for direction from the state. Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is approval of the agendas. Is there a motion to approve or any changes or additions?
Motion approved.
I do have one addition for the exact session. We have to add 125 or SDCL 125 to 3 consulting with legal counsel.
All right, we have a change to the agenda. We have a motion to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none or in favor, say aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is recognition of employee anniversaries. All right, good morning. First, this is a certificate of appreciation is presented to Craig Chapman on the sixth day of June 2023 by the Brookings County Commission in recognition of 15 years of dedicated exceptional service in the Brookings County Highway Department. Next is a certificate of appreciation is presented to Maggie Harkness on the sixth day of June 2023 by the Brookings County Commission in recognition of five years of dedicated exceptional service to the Brookings County Finance Office. Okay, next on the agenda is consent agenda items, which includes minutes, travel education requests, personnel action notices, cellular authorizations, and human services report. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second, discussion additions. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Routine business, approval of the claims. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, changes, comments?
There was one addition I passed out, another register this morning in front of you. Back on May 2, the board did approve an interest payment on our jail bond for $65,450. $600 was accidentally left off of that for fiscal charges, so we needed to actually cut the check for 600 more, so $66,050. So that was actually due June 1, so that went out, but this is the correction. And to note that that was the corrected amount.
All right, any further changes, comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, department head reports. We'll start with Brian, Highway Department.
We'll start off here, Bruce Shop update. I'll have meeting for the Bruce Shop, so just keep that in mind. The Country Club Bridge, we had a pre-construction meeting. They're looking at starting on Monday. And that's all been worked together with BMU to make sure everybody knows the detour route. It's going to be similar. And I'm just going to jump down to the 44th Street project since we're talking about BMU. They are working with Madera Township. There's been some additional signs put up, some dust control applied on township roads, and I believe Marty and them have been talking also. So the issues are being addressed and taken care of by BMU with the township and that. On the 17th, at the last meeting, we had the young man with the Boy Scouts come in and request that we do that half-mile road to Fountain Cemetery. And I would like to give a thanks to Tom Davis and Sturzinger Crushing. They donated the material we use to fill in some potholes and improve the access to the Fountain Cemetery on that minimum maintenance road on 477th. Been working on shoulder work on our chip seal routes, and I'm going to jump down to, I was notified Friday that Road Guy Construction, who was awarded our chip seal project, will begin on Monday. So one of the things I've already discussed with Marty, and I know that I discussed it with you guys last year, I do expect that there will be a extended timeframe that we do not have stripes on those routes because usually the striping outfit that's contracted through the state doesn't show up until September, October. So I am working on trying to get something temporary out there, but they will be posted 40 miles an hour and loose gravel and that until we can get our blotter applied. And then after that, there will be no pavement markings, signs posted on those roads until they get striped. So just keep that in mind. Another project that we're going to be working on is our 2023 asphalt project. We're going to do a bunch of prep work prior to boes showing up. They've indicated to me that they won't be there until late August, but we got some culvert work to do, some bridge work to do, some ditch clean out to do. I've got a whole list there. The closures on that road will be intermittent while the work takes place. We'll be taking care of all the signage. The only contract work that I'll have to have done is there's some delamination of one of the bridges up there that got to have BX Civil do and they're in town, and they said they'd take care of that for me, including putting in the guard rail on that bridge. I guess I'll be keeping you guys informed of what happens and letting the public know as far as signage and I've been working with the other departments to make sure that all of our work is getting posted on Facebook and other advertisement we can do to keep everybody informed. We've been making our best effort to do that. BMU slowly still working on, or 34th, it'd be winter construction, a little slower out there. They're having a little struggle with the railroad getting underneath the railroad and the proper permitting and that, but it is coming along. I've already touched on the 44th Street project and the Bruce Bridge Rehab Project. They closed it down the week before Memorial Day to do the grinding, additional removals and delamination work that they needed to do. And today they will be pouring that low slump bridge deck overlay. And talking with them, I would expect with the cure time that takes, we're probably going to be looking at a month, month and a half continued closure. So that's my update. The only other thing is Dunick is patching north of White. They called late last week and needed a place to go. Their plant's set up in Clear Lake, so we had some patching work that we needed to complete north of White, and that's what they've been working on. Aside from that, we do have the mowers out. I know the grass is starting to get tall, so we've been getting our mowers out there and knocking that down so the wildlife doesn't surprise somebody.
All right, questions for Brian? Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Sheriff.
Morning.
Morning.
Just a quick, quick overview. Time, we have 26 inmates and six of them for out of county. We're all set up with the US Marshal, so I'm just waiting for them to arrive. Our nurse is ready to go because we have to give them some, we have to give them a shot, but we're all ready to go with that. Anyway, we have 108 on 24/7. We have 45 that come in twice a day, nine on remote, 13 on scram, 38 for UAs, and we have four with Drug Court, Hope Court, we got a four, and DUI Court, we have 11. So again, the 24/7 area stays quite busy. Within the last week or so, the state put up at the Aurora Corner just before that accident that we had, or right after that accident, I should say, the state put up the sign, the solar stop sign with the red lights and stuff. So I didn't, Commissioner Jensen, when we talked to the state, I didn't think it was coming until next year, but anyway, it's up. Again, that accident at the Aurora Corner is drivers there, stopped for the stop sign but pulled out before the intersection was clear. So we just continued, we tried, we did some Facebook stuff and tried to, you know, keep people alerted that they got to watch for that straight-through traffic that doesn't stop, you know, turning semi, car stops, pulls out before they notice that there was a eastbound vehicle going on the north side of that semi. So, but anyway, maybe the red flashing lights will give them a little more attention to that, to that stop sign for. We got summers here. We've got lots of traffic complaints. Trying to work with Brian and his people. They're trying to do work on roads and cars are going through at high rates of speed and so forth, so we're trying to work with Brian to keep his people safe and so forth. Now with summer coming, all the little towns have their events and so forth. This weekend is Old Timers in Volga. On Friday morning from 9:00 to 10:00, we're going to have a meet and greet at the fire hall with the fire department for first responders and hello, Larsons, is it? Coffee? They're going to produce coffee and stuff, so Kelly, you're close. Come on down anyway. And so that'll be good. Other than that, I don't have a lot, other than we've had, you know, a few accidents and so forth and our usual summer complaints. My last thing here that I'd just like to ask is that if it would be possible, if the commission would give me approval to, you know, with our part-time people, you have allowed the sheriff's officer, me, to go ahead and hire when I lose somebody to go ahead and hire without coming to you guys each time. I kind of would like to ask if I could do that with the full-time. Hopefully, the cycle of people hiring and leaving is over with, but it puts a bind on me when we only meet every two weeks, and then this week was three weeks. It seems like when I do some movement, it's always right after the agenda. And Stacy and Kristen are pretty much watchdogs for me, so I'm not going to hire anybody that I'm not authorized. So what I'm asking is that when if I have a vacancy is I can go ahead and start the process of advertising it. It takes me 30 to 45 days, you know, to probably get to that point, sometimes longer for hiring. And then when I have a three-week span like this last time, it puts a damper on. What I'm asking for today, which is, I'm moving one of the deputy sheriffs, Mark Brugman, into the court deputy spots, and then that leaves a patrol spot for me. But it just gets to be kind of a bind for us and stuff. So I just is asking if it'd be possible when I have a vacancy to go ahead and get with Kristen and Stacy to go ahead and advertise and then get the paperwork in at the next meeting. That.
One thing maybe we could do is send an email to the chair, whoever that may be, you know, just to alert, so the chair then can know as part of the commission that'll be coming up. And then obviously Stacy and Kristen will handle it anyway. So, because obviously we can't send all, to everybody to make notice and that kind of stuff. You could probably, but we just can't comment the meeting there. So, you know, whoever the chair is, if we got an email or something from somebody saying, hey, we're going to start the process. We had a resignation or we had an internal bill and we're going to start it right away. I don't know if that seems fair, Kelly?
If there's, if it's just replacing something that's already like and kind, I don't see a problem with that. I think the commission should be involved if we're adding a complete new position.
For sure. I won't, I promise I won't sneak anybody in there. Stacy and Kristen are pretty good. They're, they watch me pretty good. So, thank you, thank you for that. I appreciate that.
You guys, are we okay with that?
Yeah. Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
All right, thanks Sheriff. Jacob, you have anything? Are you here for the?
This morning.
Okay. Bob?
Good morning. The been in a long time, last week. And last Thursday, we had a Brookings Solid Waste Plan stakeholder meeting. I came up to it and it looks like the landfill is going to expand out to the, to the north, which they already own the property. And so we'll still have a landfill when I do retire, which is a good thing. And Aurora is currently having a bracket made to mount their siren. They, it looks like they put a pole near their existing fire station and they're going to mount the siren on top of the pole, and they're working on getting them, getting a mount for that. I submitted a travel voucher today to go to the NACO meeting in Austin, Texas, and I did put in the goal on the 19th, which is a day before the actual session starts because there's an eight-hour FEMA session on disaster calling and getting disaster help from the feds. So I went ahead and submitted for that. We've got a PPCC pod meeting this Thursday at the East Fire Station, and that's all I have today. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, missing anybody? Okay, we have no scheduled agenda items, so we'll move on to regular business. Number nine, letter A, action to approve abatement number 23-08, an abatement request made by Jones Optometric Clinic LLC for parcel number 40262-00200-002-00 in the amount of $1,282.79. Zero motion to approve.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion, comments?
This was an air in entering the property in the valuation system. It's roughly four years old, and the property does not have a basement, and it was sketched with a basement. So there was an added $57,233 to the value of that property for three years of existence. So the total being abated is for all three years that it was an air. It was brought to our attention by the property owner and it's been corrected moving forward.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none or in favor, say aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Letter B, action to approve abatement number 23-12, an abatement request for disabled veterans exemption in the amount of $2,323.07. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Approval.
Second.
Discussion, comments?
Like most of these disabled veterans, the paperwork that comes from the VA's office is usually lagging by about a year or so. There's a retroactive date of their award. In this case, surviving spouse dating back to 2022, so the $150,000 of property value that would have been exempt from taxation for that year is, is what's the amount being abated today?
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none or in favor, say aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Letter C, an action to approve agreement 23-29, an AIA document B101-2017 between Brookings County and Design Arc, Design Arc Group LLC for the historic courthouse roof replacement. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion, comments?
This is just that contract with Design Arc for the architecture work at the, to replace the courthouse roof to move in that direction.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Jensen.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter D, action to approve agreement 23-30, an alarm monitoring service agreement between Brookings County and Rapid Response Monitoring Services, Inc. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion, comments?
This is part of the courthouse security project. We're moving into that phase now where we need to start monitoring the, the equipment that we put in. The first year of that monitoring was part of the original quote, so this we won't be billed until the next year, and it'll be about 300 annually. So what this does is it's the monitoring system. When an alarm is, if it is pushed, this, it goes to this monitoring system that then calls dispatch. So very similar to what we have here in this building.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Letter E is action to approve agreement 23-31, an agreement for voluntary right-of-way donation made by Crystal D Pulshart at L and Carol I Anderson for project number BRO-B800655 and PNC084G. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval, second.
Second. Discussion, comments?
This structure is located 2.3 miles south and 3 miles west of White. On all these agreements that you're going to be considering today, this will be for future construction. This particular structure was awarded a federal grant in 2021.
2021? All right. We're getting there, I guess. All right. Any further discussion? Comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Letter F, action to approve agreement 23-32, an agreement for voluntary right-of-way donation made by Norris A Patrick and Corinne E. Patrick for project number BRO-B800656, PNC08MJ, parcel number 13000-11248-261-20. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
This project was located 3.5 miles north and 4.7 miles east of White. And this project was awarded a federal grant in 2022.
All right. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Letter G, action to approve agreement 23-33, an agreement for voluntary right-of-way donation made by Norris A Patrick and Corinne E. Patrick for project number BRO-B800656, PCN08MJ, parcel number 13000-11248-234-00. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval, second.
Discussion?
Same structure, just the landowner owns on both sides of the road.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Letter H, action to approve agreement 23-34, an agreement for voluntary right-of-way donation by Goodland LLC for project number BRO-80060021-4. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Discussion?
This particular bridge is 5.0 miles south and .7 east of Aurora. And this project was awarded a big grant back in 2020.
All right. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Letter I, action to approve agreement 23-35, an agreement for voluntary right-of-way donation made by Raymond Surr and Javi Sura, trustees for project number BRO-80060021-4. Is there an action to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second. Discussion?
Same structure.
Gotcha. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Letter J, action to approve agreement 23-36, an application for occupancy of right-of-way for county highways made by Brookings Dual Rural Water System in Ofton Township. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Discussion, comments? Routine?
Routine.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Letter K, action to approve agreement 23-37, an application of occupancy of right-of-way for county highways made by City of Volga and Volga Township. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second. Comments, discussion?
Routine.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Letter L, action to approve agreement 23-38, an application for occupancy of right-of-way for county highways made by the City of Volga and Volga Township. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Letter M, action to approve a utility certificate for project number BRO-B8006, number 56, and PCN08MJ. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Second. Discussion, comments?
Uh, this letter is just to inform the utilities out there for the structure 3.5 miles north and 4.7 east of White that we were going to be at some point in time looking at building this. And you'll see those for each of those structures that we talked earlier on. This particular one is completed.
All right. Further discussion? Questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Letter N, action to approve quotes from Stanga Construction for additional 4H storage and game fishing parks office space at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center for 52,750. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Second. Discussion, comments?
Um, just to reiterate that the 30,000 for the two offices for the game fishing parks, um, they're going to cover half of that. And I guess we'll discuss that on the next action item about the lease or.
Okay. Discussion? Comments? All right. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley. Jensen.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Brugman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, letter O, action to approve agreement 23-39, a State of South Dakota Department of Game Fish and Parks agreement with Brookings County, amending agreement number 18-13 to construct additional office space for game fishing parks at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, comments?
Um, this is adding 180 square feet to the existing space they have. A couple key points. You can see they want to add an additional five years to the 10-year agreement that you guys originally had, which I think is great because they've contributed about 14,000 this year to offset costs and they want to continue to do that. They see this building as a great resource. They compare it to the outdoor campus and they want to be able to provide for the community as well. That's pretty much all I had. And then we're just trying to add that existing side. Well, we have a contractor in there for 4H for their space as well. Kill two birds with one stone.
All right. Comments, discussion?
As like I say, I know GF and P and, and, uh, the 4H and Dustin, they all been working together out there. And there were some questions on, on this agreement. They will follow the, the calendar and I mean, it's, everybody's been working good together out there and, and, uh, you know, for them to use some of the services and the rooms, it's all been working good. So that's, we move forward with this and I think it's a positive for the facility. The only question, Dan, you've went through this agreement and everything looks good.
So from my understanding as well too, this is a standalone agreement to get the ball rolling on the contractor. And then they will, they are working on another lease agreement like you did. And apparently this is exactly what you guys did the last time. Have agreement just to say they're going to move in and then cross the Ts, dot the Is on the next actual official lease agreement.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Brugman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks Dustin. Uh, letter P, an action to approve the annual retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License renewal for Beachbums, uh, Inc., also known as Dance Land Campground. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second. Discussion, comments?
Uh, Dance Land Campground returned their malt beverage license and South Dakota Farm Wine license. This would go in effect July 1 of 2023. Their current license expires at the end of the month. So this would just renew it for another, another year.
Are they all caught up on everything?
Um, as far as the, the county goes, yes, they're all caught up on property taxes. We've collected payment from them. So what will happen is if the board approves it today, we will submit their application to the Department of Revenue and Pier. They will do the, uh, another background check to make sure that the sales tax that they have collected that from them. So at that time, we would find out if they're approved or were not approved. So, but this application comes to the county commission before we send it off to the Department of Revenue, so.
Okay. Thank you. Sheriff, any comments? Okay. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Letter Q, action to automatically supplement for unanticipated expenses incurred and reimbursement made to Brookings County in the amount of $2,585.47 for the reimbursement for duplicate payment receipt number 00643370 to the general ledger line of 101-4-223-4220. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Second. Discussion?
I wrote the check twice. My mistake.
All right. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Letter R, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for a full-time deputy in the sheriff's office. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Letter S, action to approve a request to fill vacancy of full-time correctional officer in the sheriff's office. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Letter T, action to approve $500 funding request for the Elkton Special Days Committee for their annual 4th of July fireworks display. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Comments?
This is an annual request. There is money in the public relations line for this expense.
All right. Any other, just further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Jensen.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Brugman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Next, number 10, Commission Director's Report.
As I had mentioned earlier with the monitoring agreement, the courthouse security project is pretty much wrapped up already. They, they got in there and, and got the work done and got out. We're looking that like right now, $6,300 under budget at least. It might be even a little bit more than that, um, after they got the work done, safe and secure. So we'll be finalizing all of those bills here in the next week or so and, and submitting those to UJS for reimbursement back. Again, that was through a courthouse security grant. 75, 25, 25% will be our cost. We'll get reimbursed back the 75% from, from the state. So we'll be working on making sure we have all of our bills in line so we get everything submitted. Um, we did receive a letter, it was part of my report as well, from Minnehaha County, the JDC, about the, them dissolving the joint powers agreement for the Juvenile Detention Center. They're going to be moving to that standard rate. There was some discussion about this earlier. For 58, 48 for 2024 will be that rate. Their commission down in Minnehaha County did approve a $50 million bond to finance a new juvenile justice center down there. So some additional details are included in that, in that letter that I included with my report. We're also getting close to budget hearings, just a few weeks away. Wondering, and I know we have a couple of brand-new commissioners who've never been through this process before. We, typically we print out hard copies of books. There's a book, it's a department requested book and then there's an analysis book. Just want to make sure everyone wants a hard copy of that information or if you want it on, if you're comfortable with it, it'll still go into box so you can view it on your iPad or on your device too. But if you want a hard copy, that's fine. I just didn't want to print off more if, if people didn't want it. So does everyone want a hard copy?
Will the box be tabbed also so it's easier to follow? Sometimes when you go in box, it's, you gotta screen everyone. Will it be tabbed so we can jump between them?
Yeah, it should be. We can do that.
Then I don't need a hard copy. I just want to make sure I can get to what I want to get to without paging through 100 pages.
Right. Yeah. Okay.
I'd like a hard copy too for the first year, for sure. Yeah.
Okay. You want?
I like the hard copy because I can flip between and hit two different pages at the same time without having to go through what Mike talks about, so.
Okay. That's easy enough. No, we'll, I'll, but we'll put it into, into box too. So we have that option as well. I did hear back from one of you yesterday about the safety picnic next week. Do others plan to attend that? It's next Thursday between 11 and 2. You can go at 11 noon or 1:00. Doesn't matter. I don't need you to tell me what time you want to come, but those will be kind of the times. And then Bob is going to be giving a, a talk during that time. It's out at the OAC. Ryan, you will go?
I will be out.
Okay. Larry, are you going to go? Okay. Okay. All right. Mike had already responded. Kelly? Okay. Okay. So Ryan and Larry. And then the only other thing that I have is the upcoming dates. Again, we're doing our safety week. That is next week. So if you are interested in participating in any of our, any of our drills, I'm not going to tell you in this meeting when they will be. But if you want to reach out to me and I can let you know so you can be in the building and see what that, what that looks like. And then again, the picnic. Misty's Weed Tour is next Thursday. Dustin, the RSO appreciation party is June 19th out at the BCOAC. I think Dustin might be looking for a head count for that too. Or you can let me know and I can let him know. Budget hearings on the 26th, 4th of July, Tuesday, offices will be closed. And then just some other kind of future, future dates that are a little ways out. Does anybody know about the RSO appreciation?
I have another meeting, but I might, how long, what time's it start?
5:30.
I don't know if I can make it. I'll have to get back to Dustin.
Okay. You'll have to get back. Okay. And that's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Any questions? All right. State's Attorney's Office Report.
Yes, we made. For the Human Services Assistant. She starts next Monday with previous experience working at the school district here in Brookings as well as the Boys and Girls Club. So we're excited to have her. She'll be filling that spot. And we've also kind of, you know, made some changes with that position as well to encompass some of the diversion programming. So we're excited to have her join the office next Monday. And then I was asked by the South Dakota Legislature to go to Pier next week to testify on behalf of the State's Attorneys as it relates to county funding. Some of you may know that the legislature is conducting a summer study on county funding relating to trying to improve efficiency, trying to determine where counties are short funds. And so as President of the State's Attorneys Association, I drew the short straw to go out to the legislature to, to testify regarding that. So if any of you commissioners have any ideas, solutions, concerns as it relates to county funding, I can relay that onto the summer study next week. It's next Wednesday. I'll be testifying in the afternoon. One of our local legislators, John Mills, is on that summer study. But obviously Chris Jacobson, who Stacy works very closely with, Eric Erickson, who's the lobbyist on behalf of the County Association. Him and I visited this morning. So that'll be interesting to see if any proposals come out of that to assist the counties and kind of, yeah, closing some of these gaps in county funding. Whether or not the Medicaid expansion sort of encompasses poor relief as it relates to medical assistance is going to be an interesting thing to watch. With obviously a lot of the folks that apply for poor relief when it comes to medical, how much they're now going to be under that umbrella of that. How much they're now going to be under that umbrella of that expanded Medicaid, um, I think will be interesting, so. Um, I'll report back, uh, next commission meeting as to what was discussed and, um, if I hear anything, I'll let the commissioners know.
It sounds good. Comments or questions? All right, thank you. Uh, commissioners' reports. Commissioner Vanderwall.
Thank you. Uh, I'm. Ribbon cutting, uh, very well attended, great to see that. Uh, May nineteenth, I attended the Elkton Fireman Feed, good turnout for that. On May thirty-first, um, I attended the bridge dedication in Volga for, uh, a fallen soldier in, uh, the Korean conflict, Kenneth DeGroot. I was very well attended, glad to be a part of that. And then yesterday, uh, Larry and I attended the Railroad Authority Board here in Brookings. That's all I have to report.
What happened? Today on that River Authority, what, what took place?
Um, basically, uh, the city is going, talking about dissolving their safety committee. Um, we had a, um, motion to extend an invitation, uh, to Brookings and Elkton. If they wanted, uh, to have representation on our Railroad Authority Board. Is, is what we come up with, uh, we'll be having another meeting.
There's, there'll be information coming from, um, both, well, Steve Breitman and then Deputy State's Attorney Ben Kleinjohn have been working on. The paperwork to dissolve that railroad safety authority. Um, that needs to come to this commission because the parties to that were the county and the city of Brookings. Once that's done, then, um, it'll be just, I think internally, just with the railroad authority. I don't think it'll come to this commission to approve additional membership. Uh, because that authority, um, the railroad authority has that ability to make those changes and it, and approve those. Those, uh, additional members.
Volga already has somebody on there?
Yep.
We had two, okay, okay. So this will allow all the communities that have the railroad going through it to be, have a representation on it. All right.
And our current at-large member is Josh Jones, he's the, uh, mayor of Aurora right now, so Aurora is represented already as well.
Okay. All right.
All right. Ready for me?
I don't know, are you, are you done commissioner? Okay.
Well, mine'd be extremely short, I was gone for some vacation and, uh. Uh, May thirtieth was a BDC meeting, board meeting. Uh, discussion was held on several different areas of the organization and how it should proceed in the future. Part of it was a presentation on, uh, Tim's, uh, Reed's. Visit to Rapid City with Elevate Rapid City and how to understand, uh, how they function as a group and a large board and. Uh, no decisions were made, it was just more of an informational, uh, presentation than anything at that particular point in time, some, but some good discussion on. On how the BDC is, is changing and evolving to try and represent. Uh, some goals that the city put out in their economic development master plan that, that, uh, there are parts of it that involve the BDC and how we're going to prove. Uh, uh, promote those things that they want us to work on and work to develop. Also a discussion on some ex-official members, trying to, to, to bring more people into the discussion. Uh, that would have things that they could add to the BDC's development. Also, uh, discussion on, uh, with the ex-official members, but also an introduction to some new staff, they've got some new staff that's, uh. Uh, learning as they go here and, and put together some really good information for us so that, uh, you probably wouldn't get otherwise without staff, so. Uh, their expenditures there are fine, so, uh, that was basically the report.
Thank you, that's all I've got.
Mr. Jensen.
On the seventeenth had the E nine. Um, there's some small changes. Good. On the nineteenth, I also attended the Elkton Fireman's Feed, uh, which is always, uh, good supper for everybody, I attended. On the twenty-second, uh, BCOAC meeting, um, we kind of reviewed some numbers, uh, a little work on, uh. On the budget and, uh, discussion on some new activities that Dustin's doing. Uh, also the range, uh, range was, uh, cleaned out there again and, uh. Quite a, quite a number of, uh, or pounds of, uh, lead was retrieved. Also on the fifth, uh, attended the Railroad Authority Meeting yesterday. That's all I have.
All right, Mr. Hostler.
On May twentieth, I, that's. Looking meeting out the, out at the Outdoor Adventure Center. Uh, attended the Outdoor Adventure Center Board Meeting with, uh, Commissioner Jensen. On the twenty-fifth, we had our Domestic View Shelter, uh, Board Meeting. On the thirtieth of May, uh, attended virtually the B C E D, uh, meeting. And then on the thirty-first, uh, took part in the Brookings FOP fishing tournament out at Lake Thompson. And that is my report.
All right. I had a light schedule here. Meeting and, uh, elected new chairs, uh, for that, I have been officially elected vice chair, so at least I'm not chair, we got that going for me. So, um, but yeah, we got new. Uh, person that, uh, was termed out, Ben Stout, who had been on the board. Man, uh, you know, almost, I don't know, fifteen, we're trying to count back how long he's been on that board for Beta, so I just want to do a shout out to him for his, uh. His willingness to serve, um, and stuff, and he's been president of that board for a long time. Uh, and so, uh, just want to shout out to him there too, so, um, and, uh, I think that's about it, so. Any questions? Team, executive session, in accordance to South Dakota codified law one dash two five dash two, number one, three, four, for personnel. Contract and legal, uh, counsel. Is there a motion to approve? Or excuse me, enter into executive session.
Move to go to executive session.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign? Motion carries. All right, we'll take a ten-minute recess.